Your examiner is.
So.
Do it for yourself.
You'll have to a little more than that. No, the wall, at least I mean you can tell somebody. They don't even print a name, we can't make counsel. Oh, did it sound like we, it looked like you're going to have one?
Um, I didn't get much response. Um, council, if we have a vacancy, is that position still comes as a forum?
Of the form of actual field spots.
Of the field spots. So we have three of seven. I'm sorry. We have nine. Or three of, I'm sorry, three of eight. I, math is hard. I know we have three. Talking our fill. Eight.
Okay.
About four years. So before the mystery gets to everybody. Then we'll go ahead and call, we'll go ahead and call, we order. We will take up any voting items at this time of the information only. But we'll start with our introductions, our welcome introductions. Please, let's start period down there and just introduce yourself and look around the table this way. Make sure everybody knows who they are.
Hey, well, I don't, I can't do math today, so I don't know who I am, but. Kay England, I am the grants and resources manager here at the resource management agency and I have the to see pleasure of dapping along with Alka, the advisor.
Hope it'll be bashful.
My name is Alba Parker and I'm the one that annoys you with emails. Thank you for being here.
Gratia Brown, Christopher Greer, Assistant High Commissioner.
Hi, everyone, Kurt Jobezdabala, the Director of Property Extension.
Good afternoon, Doug Phillips with Schule Agribusiness.
Key County, Tullary County Environmental Health Supervisor of the Tullary County Dairy Program.
Jim Solis. Jared, Richard O'Agg.
Emily Gage.
I'm Russ Muller, Deputy County Counsel, I used to work at RMA for many years.
Ian Beatty, I'm the Treasurer for Tullary County Farm Bureau, and then in my day job, I work for Innovative Ag Services as the Director of Conservation. And have my own consulting firm about agricultural planning that focuses on grant work in the nonprofit space.
And you are now Tullary County Farm Bureau Director. On curly livestock range.
Bob Bender, Bender Brothers, a member of the DIA, also beginning ranches, a formerly Bob's Market, and I have a report on land renovation, not on the agenda, if anybody wants to hear it.
My name is Russ Fashua, Project Planner for RMA, working with the long-term buddy.
Jason Garcia, I'm the Planning and Permit Manager, and I'm just a fly on the wall today, but I'm here for supporters.
I was a science planner for here, also here for support, and I used to be a former staff member here for the committee.
Want to do it again?
We, we, we don't worry about them. All right, so. Anybody, there's a little form of public comments, if there's anyone here with public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. The official recorded minutes are located as indicated in blue on your agenda. Since they are recorded, you don't need to be accepted or voted on. What else can we cover right now, while we see if anybody else can? Alba, you got any way to contact? Let's see, Justin or Derek?
I can step out and call him if you'd like.
Maybe just can call, see if there's. Try to weigh in on some of this, or if this is being. Yeah, no, you're good. May get, maybe you're going to interrupt here, Steve.
Was that?
Quickly introduce yourself.
Colin Fernandez, permit crop.
Our official week, thank you for being here.
Sorry, boy. Pokemon's a little full. A couple of laps around.
All right, so. With that, I want to turn it over to Denise to talk about RVLP overview, discussion.
Actually, are we doing the, you've got the minutes and then you can have the zoning. For you.
I got the same agenda you do.
Yeah, it's just blue, yeah, number four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that ran right into it, okay.
Yeah.
Introduce you to the zoning ordinance provision. Russell?
Yes.
You're up.
Do you want me to go over these? Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody, so, um, with our meeting, we have been working on amending the Tullary County zoning ordinance on December 352. We are doing it in a multi-phase portion, so, um, for our beginning part, yes.
Why, why are you doing it?
We are doing it because in 2012, the Tullary County General Plan made provisions to do amendments to the zoning ordinance. And it's just taken a few years to actually get this project up and running, so we finally are moving forward with it and trying to make actual substantial changes to the zoning ordinance. So again, we're going to go in phases, so the first step that we're doing, we're tackling artist one, which is agriculture. So this is going to be the first one, after that, we're going to be moving on to residential, commercial, and then industrial. But for right now, what we are doing, this is just for, we are presenting a workshop at the Tullary County Planning Commission that's going to be held next week. We do have a flyer that we can, that will pass out, actually, I have. Pass out the notice for everybody, and we'd be happy if everybody would be to attend. So again, all of these changes that we are proposing, this is just the workshop, so nothing here is set in stone. We're just kind of trying to see, as of right now, how everybody feels about the proposed changes and, you know, if we're going either too far, too little, things like that. So that's why we're trying to get some input right now. So right now, we are proposing basically all of the agriculture ones that we're doing right now, so all the way from AE, AE10, AE1, AE40, AE20, AE80. Also updates to Section 16, which is special use permits and variances, and the assemblies of people for education and/or event purposes. This one we included as well because it does affect agricultural zones, for those ones as well. So again, the reason why we're doing this is the Tullary County General Plan 2012 update laid out provisions for updating the zoning ordinance. So again, we're finally moving forward, so again, this is just kind of a workshop, we're here to, you guys can help us facilitate and shape the rules and regulations as part of zoning ordinance update to mitigate significant conflicts arising from incompatible land uses. So these are the major changes that we're proposing, so one of them is to make agricultural service establishments a by right use within the AE, AE1, AE10, AE20, AE40, and AE80 and AF zones. If it is less than five acres in size, over five acre consignment will still require a use permit. Change the number of poultry or similar type of bird from three bird for every 1,300 square feet to fifteen bird for every one half acre. So ultimately, in the end, the amount of birds that you can have will still remain the same. It's just that we found that it was, the public was having a hard time calculating the birds, so we figured by doing it by half acre, it would be a little bit easier to understand that one, but the resulting end is you still have the same amount of birds. And within the zoning ordinances, anything substantial would still require a use permit as well. So changing the noticing for the assemblies of people from 300 feet to 2,640 square feet or half a mile. Reduce the distance between structures for human habitation and other housing livestock from 100 feet down to 40 feet. The reason why we did this is we're trying to make it less restrictive in the agricultural zones. So we noticed that the AE and the AE1 zone, I believe it was, they were down at 40 foot. So we changed the other zonings to match, which was our least restrictive at 40 feet. Another one is increase the maximum height of fences and hedges and walls from three feet to eight feet. This will also be subject to setback, uh, building line setbacks, as do not impede online of sites. One of the reasons for this change was traditionally, if somebody wants one over three feet in size, they would apply for a variance, and we have never denied a variance. So instead of constantly having people apply for variances, we figured that we would just change it to allow for the A height and feet. And then another change that we recently have is we're going to update the definition of agriculture itself. So this is one that we kind of wanted to lay out here, so the previous definition of agriculture is lands that produce dry land's grains, barley, and wheat, lands that have physical characteristics, characteristics that would qualify for prime, or statewide importance farmlands, except for the lack of irrigation water, and lands that currently supplying to find livestock, poultry, and our agriculture operations. So again, this is a very old definition, statewide important farmland, that's kind of a definition that's not even used anymore. So I guess, I think this, this was created back around in the 1990s, so we have updated ours to the art and science of cultivating soil for growing and harvesting of crops and rearing and management of livestock, including husbandry, agriculture, and forestry, and the production and processing of said products for sustaining and enhancing human life. So the reasoning behind this one and where we came up with our definitions, one was it was taken from the main definition of agriculture from the Webster's Dictionary. We've also looked into other jurisdictions such as Fresno County, Monterey, and Napa. And this is kind of a blend of all three of their definitions to closely coincide with theirs. So we feel that this one is, encompasses a lot more and is a lot less specific than the original definition that's found in the general form. These are some of the additions that we are proposing, so adding a mini spa storage facility in the AE, AE1, AE10, AE20, AE40, AE80 with approval, approval of a special use permit, however, the facility can be no more than 20 acres in size. Adding a land use matrix, which we can go over that one a little bit later. Adding the harvesting, carrying, processing, and packaging, basically to the by right uses. So again, we allow for the growing, but we thought that it was kind of ridiculous that the harvesting and processing, packaging required a use permit. So again, we're trying to ease restrictions in the ag zone as part of the update. So adding definitions of mini storage facilities, solar, private, solar utility scale, and also adding agriculture value change to our definitions as well. So our proposal for the definition of an ag value chain is a full range of activities that are required for small and large scale production of agricultural goods and the processing, packaging, and distribution of said agricultural goods. So what this would do is, again, this is kind of almost getting rid of the ag service establishment and instead calling it ag value chain. So again, we're trying to move those ones towards a more of a by right use, and again, lessing restrictions that we have on the agricultural zone as long as it's for agriculture. My just, that's what the next one is, I just said that, and so then the next one, so the zoning matrix. So this is another thing that other jurisdictions have done, and we think that would help greatly, help understand our zoning ordinance. So we're adding categories of by right uses and just stating whether they are permissible by rights, which is indicated by the A, by use permit, which is indicated by the P, or the dash line means that it is not permitted. So this will be going at the beginning of the agriculture section for the zoning ordinance. So that way, it's kind of a one-stop shop to just kind of take a look at really quickly and just see if you're proposing something, is it allowed by right? Or what would be required? So some of the minor changes is removing redundant language and definitions. So you'll find that if you, you will have an opportunity to look at our proposed changes, we have it. And you can see there's going to be a lot of redlining, the redlining is we're not getting rid of those uses. What we're doing is, instead of having the definitions found in the ag zones themselves, and then also defined in Section 2 and Section 16, we're just going to have them in one place, because we found that a lot of times those definitions would actually be conflicting with each other. So to just have the definitions found in one place, we figured that that would be a lot easier, cause less confusion. Getting rid of Appendix 1, so those were the uses that were allowed in the AE1 zone, so again, that made it very confusing, so you would have to go to the AE1 zone. Didn't say what you would have to know to go into Appendix 1 to find the actual allot uses. So we're moving Appendix 1 into AE1, so getting rid of Appendix 1. And then reduce the distance between two structures for human habitation from 20 feet down to 10 feet. Reasoning for that is that's what it is in the residential zone, so we figure again, less restrictive and to just be in conformity with the zones to just do that reduction. So again, we do have all of our changes, it's on our Tullary County website, so the entire document is there. I would highly recommend downloading the document, because unfortunately, the one that we have viewing online, you can only change the pages one at a time, and you can't scroll to whatever page you're specifically looking for, but if you download it, you can download it in the PDF version. That way you can scroll to the specific, and then on the very bottom of our website, we also have a spot there where you can actually place comments. So while reading the document, if you want to give us any feedback, me and Emily, we get email whenever somebody submits a comment to that. So we recommend anybody, and then these ones as well, we have up here, just passing around. So again, that's the notice, again, for next week's planning commission meeting, but at the top, we'll also have the website address where this, where the document can be. Again, this is just, again, the notice. And so if you want, you can take extra copies, you have them, so in case you want to give it to any member of your organizations that are not here today, and you want to share that information, feel free to take an extra copy. As well. But that concludes what we have as far as the updates for that, if anybody would have any questions or immediate comments.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The reduction of 100 to 40 feet for livestock, which is supportive, however, that's not going to, that shouldn't affect the right to farm act because it's still within the zone, correct? Okay. Is it often that some of those ag zones brought it to residential buildings?
It, it's not with that, it's just that, again, it's, we found inconsistencies because in the lower ag zones, they were restricted to 40, but then as we started going up in acreage, then that increased the distance between the pans and that one, and so we wanted to use the least restrictive. And we were, that one too, we, I think we had a discussion with Jim about that one, I know meeting prior, and about whether we consulted with environmental health, which we have not done yet, so again, this is nothing that we're setting in stone, but it's just kind of trying to get proposed changes in there, and again, you know, this is what this discussion is about. Are we going too far, you know, is this a health risk, is this a health hazard? By moving that, again, we just wanted to try it to be a little bit less restrictive, but you guys are more the experts, we did some research into it, but you guys are the experts, so if you are telling us, hey, that sounds dangerous, then it's definitely something that we would take into consideration to move that one back to.
And I'm, I'm not saying, it's, I, I'm, if anything, I'm supportive of it, it's just we get the occasional calls and we enforce a good portion of the right format, so.
Yeah.
In case we get that, you know, just be mindful of that limit, which I, I think is great.
Yeah, and one of the things we're talking about too is any of those very large facilities, like the dairy facility, none of those ones require a use permit anyways, and a lot of times, conditions of approval can be put into the use permit that can make them more restrictive and put back that 100 foot in there, but this is more for the by right uses than it would just be at the distance of 40.
Thank you.
What is the reasoning of the storage units in AE zones?
That one, I think it was, that one was kind of more brought on by some of the farmers that are requesting other uses, because again, it's with restrictions of water, so are, they kind of wanted other uses. And we have done recently a few zone changes from ag to commercial in order to allow these ag mini storages. And so it's one of those things that, again, we're just kind of proposing it to see, you know, if it's something that they feel that that would be another use, again, kind of give another avenue for the farmers, if they can get water, something that they can do with their property in order to stay profitable, I know that's way outside of ag. So again, it's just one of those things that we're kind of proposing, see how people feel about it, but that was one of those two that we were kind of shaky on it, but we were talking to, I believe, uh, I forgot, it was mentioned by Aaron Bach, who was asking us to kind of look at other jurisdictions, see how they handle the mini storages. We didn't find too terribly much of other jurisdictions that did actually allow that, but again, we just wanted to try and make another avenue for farmers to do something with their property.
Could a farmer apply and build mini storages today?
No, they could not. That, that is, yeah.
Why, why could they not?
It's, it's not a permissible use in the ag.
Could it request a zone change?
They could request a zone change, yes.
And it would come under RVLP review?
Yes.
And it may end up as board supervisors, but it could still get approved.
Yes, and we have done a few over the past few years where we have done those zone changes from ag to commercial.
So the answer is no.
Well, they, okay, so yeah, so they could do it if they do the zone change. But this would circumnavigate that, so again, we're trying to lessen the burdens on farmers, not making them go through those processes of having to do the zone change and to spend the money to do the zone change, so that way they can just apply for the use permit for the thing, so again, as long as it's less than 20 acres in size.
If I wanted to build a mini storage in Visalia, what would be the process?
In the city of Visalia?
Yep.
It would be through their jurisdiction, so you would have to request it from the city.
So in this, it'd be easier to build it in the county than in the city.
We would like to believe that it would be easier to build in the city. But again, we, we do, we would, like you said, we would have to go through the RVOP analysis, so if it doesn't conform to that and if the, the RVOP score does not meet the requirements in order to do the zone change, then no, you could not do the zone change, and you could not have that mini storage facility at that place.
Do you think that? Like, that the facilities that are close to habitation, you know, you're talking about lessening the distance on habitation. I mean, I can understand in some of the AE, AE1, in the, in the smaller ag zones, that it's hard to get 100 feet without moving it closer to a neighbor or whatever, but in the larger ag zones, is there, what, what, what's, what's the benefit of, of that change?
The benefit would just be that it's, it's less restrictive, so that way, if somebody wanted to, that's why, we're not saying that they have to, now they have to put it at 40 feet, but if they want to, they could not move it as close as 40 feet.
And be for employee healthy? Do, where you could build closer together?
Yeah.
I'm just going to take that one, so the human habitation distance between buildings is going from 20 feet to 10, given those changes, but between any livestock shelters going from 100 to 40. If that clarifies anything.
Any other questions, Russell? So just, just reiterate, next week?
Yes.
The planning commission.
Nine, eight, nine AM at the Tullary County.
Seeing that Mr. Washington kind of indicated that there's going to be more staff review and more coordination, more coordination within RMA also?
Yeah, because again, this is, this, this meeting is just kind of our first, kind of like a kickoff, if you will, workshop that we have, but you know, as kind of indicated, we would like to involve some of the other departments, environmental health.
It's not your intent to redefine or to come up with, I mean, ag services, don't you have a definition right now? You say ag services, but there's no definition on ag services.
Yes.
But you're not looking at, you're, you're looking at this value chain. Is that, is that in that publication, or is that?
The ag value chain, we did add it, we've added it to the, what's, what we call the preamble.
Okay.
It was added in that section, I don't believe we've added it yet in Section 2. I don't believe we've added it yet in section two.
Cause I haven't seen it, Jim.
Okay, it's only found in the preamble right now, which is kind of towards the end of the document.
Uh, attachment eleven, I think, in the one we have online.
Oh, we got it. This is the update here. So this is a PDF copy of the update. Um, oh, wow. So it should actually be, so after the agenda, it should be kind of close to the top. But here under the preamble, as you can see, kind of the last one, I know it's a little hard to see. Let me see if I can try and zoom in there. But but this is where we added, right under the weapons and ax stuff, we added the ag value chain. So the definition and as well as talking about why we're taking this approach, the benefits of taking the ag value chain approach for that. But it is listed in our preamble. That's where we have it right now. But again, this is still a work in progress and kind of Mr. Washington was talking about. We, we want to go through, update all of our definitions. That was kind of something that was dropped on us last week. So that's something that we are continuously working on. So again, this, this workshop is not, we're done with it. This is what we're trying to approve right now. It's to more further the conversation and keep it going. And so adding the definitions over time, you'll start to see that. And I'm pretty sure we'll have more workshops where once the definitions have been defined, you know, and again, this document will always be online as we make updates to it. We will constantly be updating the one online. So if you, if you guys want, you can always go to our website, take a look at what the newest version we have, see the changes that we're making to the definitions. And again, if you guys say, hey, this doesn't look right, something looks wrong, just leave those comments in that comment section and you know, we'll be more than happy to look into it. And, and then when we do our next meeting, again, invite you to come back to that meeting, see how the changes are.
So if you have a, if you have this ag services as a by right, what, what does, walk me through that. What, what, what does that actually mean? I'm not sure if I understand what that means.
So the ag service establishments right now, what we're doing is, so again, we're trying to do like the packaging and the processing. Those ones are gonna be kind of set differently. These ones are for like when people want to store tractors or when people have things that are not necessarily the growing aspect of the agricultural production, but the ones that support the farmers. So those are what we are defining as for the ag service establishments. So that's why those support units, we want to allow those again as a by right use. Again, so long as it's five acres.
Uh, five acres or less.
Five acres or less, again.
So, so, so when you say that, that means that the person that owns the land, that farmer, they, that's by right if they own it.
If, if the farmer owns it and if it's for their own use on their own property.
Own use on their property.
We consider that an accessory use. And that, that's already a by right use. So this is if you're storing stuff for other farmers to use. So like if you have the trucks or if you have the crates, things like that on your property so that other farmers can use, that is not gonna be a by right use. Right now, you would need a use permit to store those things for other farmers to use. And that's what we're trying to eliminate.
How far does that extend? I mean, PCA firms, washouts?
I'm not familiar with those terms. I'm sorry.
Right, like how long of extension? Like could it be your best friend's cousin's mother that's doing it and?
No, he just said it. We understood what he just said. It's by right, but if, if, if you're in the family, well, maybe, maybe, maybe we are, maybe. I shouldn't interrupt. Go ahead. And you're talking about whether it's an accessory to?
Yeah, I mean, if it's facility, but no relation, it's just a business that works with it down the line. But you know, no buy-in or anything. As long as it is an outside company that supports your operation, that's okay by right?
Yes.
So I could, I could set up a five acre thing for supervisor as a by right because it supports agriculture to this?
Yeah, well, if, you go ahead.
Sorry, if you can explain, I guess, what we consider now, what is agricultural service establishment? What are some examples? Then what's classified agricultural service establishment? Is that something?
Yes.
Okay, well, yes, some similar examples of recent ones that we have is where people have stored tractor trailers on their, just kind of almost like as a parking lot. But again, they're not doing it for their farm specifically. Those are some of the ones that we have. I'm trying to think off the top. Do you remember any contractors?
Here.
Well, it's specifically agricultural service versus a contract.
Did you have any example of that?
I could do cold storage.
Yeah, like a cold storage facility would be a good example. Maybe a facility that does washes or repairs on tractors, for example. Some other example because of that agricultural establishment.
But when you're talking about fertilizer specifically, because those ones are considered hazardous materials. So because that's a hazardous materials, that is something that we would not allow by right because, because of the hazardous materials and it needs other restrictions on there, such as through environmental health. So we do have a provision in there that talks about that any use that is being proposed is subject to determination by our planning director, whether it's gonna be a lot permissible as a by right use. So even though in this form, we are saying it is gonna be by right, if the hazard level is going to be too high, and again, I can't give an exact word that threshold lies, but that will be up to the determination of the planning director to say, hey, this seems like we would need additional, like we would need to put in a use permit or something like that. So you know, even though we are saying these are all, we're trying to make ag service establishment a by right, I guess there should be an asterisk in there. It's, it's subject to determination by our planning director.
So, so there is still, there would be a permit review?
There will be a permit review, yes.
It's not, it's not a use permit, but a permit review?
Yeah, so when somebody talks and they, they plan on doing something, especially if they submit an application for a building permit, and during that building permit phase, because all of these things would still require building permit no matter what. But once they start doing the building permit, we take a review of that. Then they could be like, hey, are you sure this is ag service establishment by right? Once we get letter of intent, then we'll take that to planning director and say, does this fall under your belief of?
So, so let's say I've got, I've, I've, I've got good citrus, well, grown citrus and I've got a nice roadside stand, everything on my side of the road, it's with a permit. And the guy across the road from me decides he's gonna put in a livestock washout. But across from where customers are coming in. Is that a by right?
It will be under the new updates. Because a truck washout will be considered an agricultural service establishment, which currently requires a special use permit.
Which attracts?
Because there's noises, there's odors as well coming from those washouts. Yeah, I driven a couple and you could smell, you know, this is something. So they, we have conditions on there to address those, you know, to make sure the odor is controlled, dust is controlled, noise is controlled. So that's why currently we require a use permit with those conditions. Under the new ordinance update, it would, it would be considered actual establishment, which would be allowed by rights.
So it would not require a permit?
It would not require a special use permit. It would not require a special use permit. And that's what.
Yeah, that's okay. So the difference between a special use permit and a use permit?
They are the same. We just interchangeably change use.
Okay, is there, is there a notification process with the use permit?
Yes, three hundred feet.
And now, what is it?
Three hundred feet. And we also notice it in the newspaper as well.
And how far is the notification process for special use permit?
Three hundred feet. And where that came from, that's actually found in state law. So state law requires a three hundred foot notification and that's what we take as well.
Well, sometimes state law is written where the county can't do, that sometimes the county can do more, but not less.
Yeah. And we can do more. And that's why actually with this one, if you remember, we talked about the assemblages of people. We're increasing the notification from three hundred feet to half a mile. So that was one, because that was specifically by the board of supervisors. They requested that we make that change because they want more people to be notified about that.
So on the by right, you said there would be notification?
By rights, no, there is no notification.
As Jim was saying, if someone wants to come in with a truck wash, you said that requires a use permit?
Right, right now.
So if it's a by right and say somebody has some type of fruit, grapes or whatever, someone comes in with the cattle truck wash, whatever, and maybe they're concerned about runoff coming onto the crop or whatever. Or for, for like environmental health, we may be like they're storing hazardous chemicals, you know, for the truck wash or something like that. How would we be notified, number one, that, okay, if they're storing chemicals that may require a business plan? And would the farmer who may have invested interest on not having any runoff or anything affecting his crop? How would they be, would they be able to comment or?
So, so how I would kind of envision it going right now is if something in that case, so let's say that we do make it a by right use, since they would be allowed permissible to do something like that. But once the, the runoff does become a potential issue, then the landlord would be able to contact the county, which we would then go through either code enforcement type of processes, or then we would send somebody out there. And then once we make that determination, hey, it seems that this could be an adverse effect. Then it brings back to that provision where we have, where we make, where the planning director can make the determination that this has now gone above the threshold for a by right use and that they would then be subject to the special use. So then we would probably have them do a stop work until they go through the use permit process, which again, would include notification, would include, uh, include public comments. And so at the planning commission, the, the landlord, the, the farmer would be able to, you know, raise those issues and concern. And then if it is deemed that what they are doing is below, above the by right threshold, then, uh, you know, we could then enforce action that way. So it would take a little bit of time in order to do that. So it's not a perfect rule, but.
Could the director put, would it conditions?
Yes, and at planning commission, we can put the conditions in.
Uh, we, something that we can do as well, if, if it's a larger scale project, you know, if it's a larger scale truck wash, because he does a smaller business out there, we could advise or recommend go through the project review committee process, which is a primary process, uh, so to, to address the concerns that could come up on a larger scale. I think that was.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to bad mouth truck washers, it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, do they have to have a, a traffic survey beforehand?
Uh, that is, our, our general plan says that as, as long as it's less than a hundred peak hours of traffic generated, then no, there is no traffic study.
What, what does a hundred peak hour, what does that mean?
Uh, so the, the people coming in, people leaving, if it's, if it hits at around a hundred peak hours, so a hundred trips generated.
When they don't one hour period?
Uh, well, peak hours between, I forgot exactly when it was.
Eight days.
This is a certain timeframe.
Yeah, there's, there's a timeframe. So if you have like, so if you have like fifty trucks coming in and fifty trucks leaving, that's a hundred peak hour trips at that point. And that would require a traffic study. But if you just have like one truck or ten trucks coming in, ten trucks leaving, then that would be around, you know, twenty trips generated. So no, that would not require a study.
Don't you get into clean water stuff when you start talking about truck washouts? And what's in the bed of the truck when you wash it out? Aren't you regulated by the state as that water, water is and what you do with it? Does that water have to be?
And this, and that, and that is another thing that, so when we say by right, we're talking about planning, it's, it's a by right use. There's no land use entitlement. But again, you're still subject to like building permits. So you would need building permits. Anything that you need to clear through the air or the water board, you would still need those permits. If you're near the state interstate and you need Caltrans, you would still need their permission. So while you may have planning's blessing to go ahead and move before, if environmental health says no, if fire says no, if Caltrans says no, water board, airport, if any of them say no, then the answer is still no. So even though we say yes, they say no, the answer is no.
Right.
We still gotta follow the environmental health requirements.
Sure, yeah, but yeah, you just won't need that land use entitlement. So you don't need that use permit. But that definitely doesn't mean you can just start running your business. You do have to get those other licenses first.
Any other questions, Rob?
Yeah, if anything comes up, feel free to email them and also comment on their webpage. I expect that next Wednesday will be that workshop at the bank.
Yeah, and like I said, this is just our very preliminary kind of conversations.
This is a, this is a relevant.
First preliminary too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Hey Denise, have we stalled long enough for you to get your stuff ready?
My stuff is ready, yeah. It's in your packet.
So before we go further.
Sure.
How many members do we currently have here?
I cannot math that right now, okay? Word, but not math. Okay, we have one hall, yeah. So four members present and we have eight members seated.
So we still don't have a quorum because we would need?
One more.
One more.
Okay.
So we can't take action, but.
I can receive comments.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There's no formal action by a quorum.
Made my life harder in a lot of ways over these past few months. But I'm making my life easier right now. Um, okay, so.
I just, let me ask you one question.
Yep.
Anybody, anybody on the committee that was, that would probably be attending that hearing? It's Wesley. Or are you gonna try to put that one here? I will try. Anybody else here?
If not, we interrupt him now.
Okay. I'm doing double duty then. I imagine Trish will be in there too. Anybody else? Hey, go ahead, I'm sorry Denise.
So in your packet, you have a letter from the Farm Bureau um, regarding the RVOP. And, um, a lot of the, um, the seven questions that are asked um, actually go into what I prepared for us to look at today. So I think this is just sort of the tip of the elephant, if you will. Um, back in May, um, we discussed some changes to the RVOP. There were just some really basic redlining changes, like there was something called definitions, which was really more purpose. So I've made those, but, um, it's really gets to the heart of this letter and sort of what I'm seeing as the county's water person is that the way that the RLVP, RVOP categories are currently prioritized does not reflect current conditions. I'm gonna just die in the beginning. Um, so in your handout, you have this, it's up on the screen, um, this PowerPoint slide. So currently, RVOP has fifteen categories that are assigned points. There's a couple of criteria that are pass fail that are at the beginning of the, of the form. But the points are allocated to numbers, one fifteen, that is the prioritization. So in other words, soil classification is the top priority. It gets the most points. And then groundwater recharge potential is the fifteenth priority and it gets the fewer. So on the next page, I put it in a really pretty pie chart for you because pictures are better than drawing. And so you can kind of see how, um, there's soil classification is top at thirteen percent. And then parcel size and land use suitability are both um, the next priority. And then you have, uh, so those are equal, but less than soil classification. And then surrounding parcel size, surrounding land use, proximity to inharmonious uses and proximity to land and ag reserves. Um, all of those are weighted the same, though the next sort of categorization and priority and so on and so forth. So where you get to, um, surface irrigation is only worth, I think, one point. Um, which obviously under stigma, probably should change. So I thought today to just sort of start to work through this. And if we can look at these categories and sort of start to talk about whether or not these are the right categories. And then once we have the right categories, what the priority should be. So I think today is more of just kind of an open discussion. Um, and if there's anything missing from these fifteen things, um, then also, you know, add that in. So I think today is to sort of try to figure out what should have top priority, just kind of figuring out or talking about what the priority should be. Or talking about what the priority should be. If there's another way you'd like to go, I'm all ears.
We can try to ask you some other questions too, in case you have any, because some of us have done our review analysis.
And I think that would be helpful because I think there were some questions about, so the, the soil classification data that's currently referenced. Is still referencing the Soil Conservation Services, which is now in RCS, and then now they have the National. Um, Cooperative Soil Survey Database, which, so I cleaned up that reference, but you can. Talk about how you all access that information. I do have to step out of court to jump on a call, so I might actually tag to Jose to facilitate this conversation because you have a lot more experience. With the RVLP than I do. And since we don't have courts yet, we can't take action. So we can just receive comment and then. Put something together or a working group, whatever the. But we can't form a working group without a forum, so we'd have to agenda that next time and then. But again, just trying to figure out how to go about digesting these fifteen things.
And I want to tell you, County Council put so many. Roadblocks last summer, we tried to do one, it seemed undoable. Put a working group together, so. I'm not sure how we're gonna, I'm not sure I'm gonna get this done. But I'll probably go to the supervisors and find out, so.
I'm gonna change spots someday. I love the math when we're done, but.
Tell us about how you do RVOPs now.
Uh, very carefully. No, there is a scoring sheet. We have something in the, our general plan where.
We have a copy of the score sheet.
Okay.
If we wanna pull it up.
Thank you, yeah. There you go. You can put it out for me. Have I personally done it for today or any time, to be honest? Not, but I'm very familiar with it and also I've done it in other jurisdictions, so it's similar. This year.
So I guess that's one question for the group is how often is this being utilized?
I've, I've done four RVOP analysis, um, within like the last five years.
So when we get an application in for a request to do a zone changer example. And if it's specifically located in the rural Van Nuys Plan, which is one of our land uses that's, uh. Um, in the general plan. Um, then we do something called the RVLP analysis, the rural change analysis. And gives us a score to determine if, if. I mean, we certain criteria to see who qualifies to do the zone change. Um, depending, we go over all these different classifications. Those are just the soil types. The current use that's there now could be, if it's used for agricultural purposes. We look at the surrounding properties as well, like what's being used around the property. Uh, and there's also agriculture uses around the property or there's some commercial uses adjacent next to that. And Russell, you can feel free to, same with Emily too. Uh. I mean. And we take a look at other things, including the soil types, um. Water supplies, irrigation of water. So all that takes to account as far as when we do the scoring. And every time, as part of the research, as part of processing the zone application. We go through this. And there's some instructions as well, there's some guidance as well that we go through views. And we rely on different resources to look at this information, to use our geographic information systems, otherwise known as GIS. Uh, where we can, uh, if it's up to date, that's where we get our information, such as soil types. Irrigation and, and other zones around them as well. So when we get all this information, we go through this checklist to give us a particular score. Uh, to see if we can move forward with the change of zone. So that's pretty much a brief overview. And how we, and how often we use this, it's what we're doing a zone. Uh, most of the time within, that's okay within the rural analysis. Therefore, the RVOP analysis, so.
So, so Jose, yourself and Russell both indicated that you have done a lot of RVOP analysis. But how often does someone come in and say, I'd like to do such and such? Well, that's gonna require an RVOP and it's gonna be a zone change, it's gonna require an RVOP and they say. Well, we better do something else.
I'm actually going through my local other projects and I'm trying to figure out. Yeah, so there's this one right here, so twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three, was probably one of the last times I did that. Um, and I know that we recently had a zone change application come in, which would require an RV, RVOP analysis, but again. They're, they're pretty infrequent where they, where they come in. Uh, but usually how the process goes is once they go up to the counter and they, uh, give us a proposed use. And they said, we wanna go ahead and do commercial. We look at their parcel, we go, well, you're located in agriculture. And then, um, then after that, we'll look at the land use. If they're within the RVOP. Then that's when we say, okay, well, you require an RVOP analysis. So this one right here. This was actually one where we denied the zone change, uh, because the, the point system was nineteen. Over here, so, um, so existing parcel sizes. Uh, soil was, um. So it was not in the Williamson Acts, but they had, I believe, a class one soil. So that gave them twenty-four. Uh, the gross acreage was pretty high on there. I believe it was, I think it's ten acres or above. Uh, they'll give you a score of four. Existing land use, again, they were agriculture, so they got four. Surrounding parcel sizes, all the parcels around were more than ten acres in size. So they got the maximum point value for that. Um, and again, a lot of them were also. Um, within, uh, within agricultural and ag reserves under Williamson Act contracted lands. Um, so yeah, so eventually this one ended up with a score of nineteen. And so, um, in order to be considered what they call the gray area, which would allow for zone change, you have to be within, I believe it's nine seventeen points. So if you're within that bracket, you're considered in gray area, which can be considered, uh, by a potential change.
So how do, how do you? How do you collect the data to make your analysis?
As of right now, we use, um, our, our GIS data for that. So they have the soil information that's from, uh. Oh, from the USDA.
You know, I've, I've looked at a lot of, uh.
Right.
I've, I've worked a lot, been out there with a lot of parcels. And I haven't found a parcel yet that had. Less than two or three soil types in one parcel.
Yeah.
Some of that soil may be a class ones, maybe a class twos. How do you decide which classification assigned to it? APN, when it may have three different classes in one APN?
Well, when we do this, like, once we use geographic information system, a GIS. And that data also comes from other sources. It may be pulling from the USDA, it may be pulling from maybe some information from maybe the water market or.
Maybe some garbage truck somewhere. No, really, I'm sure. I've seen some of the GIS information.
Yeah.
And you cannot ground truth. You know, the resolution gets so broad and you walk out and, and you, you have some of us guys go out here and actually wear the boots and go out and do this stuff. And just because it's in the GIS.
Right.
Just because it's on the map, doesn't mean that's what's on the ground.
It may not always be up to date as well, but we do have some teams.
Soil history stands out. But what changes, what changes? The soils didn't change. What changes is somebody run, running a new dataset and decides that. They're, they're gonna eliminate a particular soil strat.
Right.
They've combined it with something else.
And there are situations where we do go to the actual source, the actual website to look up this information. We have to go to USDA's website. Whatever ones we use.
Blood soil survey.
Well, yeah, thank you. That's the one, that's possibly one to be used. We go straight to the website to get the more accurate, more detailed information. So same with the BIMA, like we need blood information, we go straight to their website as well to get more accurate maps. Uh, go straight to the source themselves to get that data and information.
This is, if the applicant comes in, how much of the information does the applicant provide you that you sell?
They usually just give us the APN number. They don't actually have their own soil type, they don't have that information. And they rely on us to do the, to do the analysis part.
Could an applicant, like, say the map says, you know, sand, clay, whatever. And they, and the applicant says, well, no, I, I know it's whatever other type of soil. Can they do their own? Like soil borings and say, look, this is predominantly the soil we have in this area and present a different.
If it's from a qualified professional, then yes, they can go ahead and do that. But if it's just some Joe smoke coming saying, hey, this is my soil type, I know what it is. And probably not will trust our information that we have. Over what they say. But again, if they come in with a qualified professional, that they have done those studies, then yes, we will.
Yeah, if you have an example you'd like to bring up.
Well, I just, I, I wanted to ask about interpretation because on a lot of soils here in Central Valley. You have an irrigated class and a non-irrigated class.
Yes.
In many cases, you have class two A irrigated farmland. That can also be a class five of no irrigation is available.
Yeah.
So how would that get scored?
So first, it's this one right here. So actually, going back to the fish barrel and what's up, you look at number, point three, number one. Land compatibility, so soil, it was prime class one if irrigated, class four if not irrigated. But we wanna use the most restrictive because they are currently irrigated. That was an active farm site. So I, I, I gave them maximum amount of points at four because I consider it a class one because yes, they are. Now, if the land has been stripped and they're, they've completely tore out everything. Then I might use the class four because they're no longer irrigating it and they've taken it out of production. But in this particular case, it was an active farm, so I.
Are you the number? The list available for use of the request?
Well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm doing it kind of at the status quo, what is it now? So if it is now currently being farmed, or even if it was just previously farmed and they just took it out of production, but it was just recently farmed. I would use the irrigated version. Um, and again, for, for this particular instance, I used the irrigated one because they were, it was actually actively being farmed at the time. But there have been other ones where we had one over in Goshen, that's kind of all like a weird island. They haven't, uh, farmed on that one probably in the last four or five years. So I use the non-irrigated, uh, classification for that.
If you, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
But from getting back, they have a big number, they obviously can't do their project.
So the score is high.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, I thought you meant the classic.
Better part of your, that chance to make something else out of your product.
Uh, Robert, in, in trouble. Let's clarify that. The planning department says no. But then that applicant can do what?
So if we say no, the applicant is always able to move forward with their application. So they must by law be able to take it before the decision-making body.
And at nineteen points, where would it go?
So what, what the county would do is we would recommend denial to the decision-making body. Because they did not pass the RVOP analysis. But we, so for certification, we cannot tell the applicant, no. We are not allowed to by law. They must be able to go through the proceeding. They must be able to reach that decision-making body. But the county would recommend denial because they did not pass the RVOP, RVOP analysis. So if the board wanted to allow them anyways, then that's something that's outside of our control.
So so nineteen points, would they go to the commission or the board?
It would still go, it would always go to the planning commission, that's the first step. So then, planning commission would then make a recommendation to the board. So the county would recommend denial. More than likely, the planning commission would make a recommendation for denial. And then it's up to the board of supervisors on what they would want to do.
On, when you're talking about. Land that is no longer irrigated. And, you know, you said, well, it was irrigated five years ago, I give it class one. There's gonna be a whole lot of land in Tulare County that is not gonna be irrigated ever again. And it's gonna be, one year it's irrigated and then it's not. So what are you gonna give that?
Uh, probably whatever my boss tells me at that point. Because I mean, I mean, they'll talk to it, to be honest, though that one is, it's more gonna be moved to the political realm of that one. So I will give my judgment based on what I see. So most likely, I would usually use the most restrictive. But again, if my boss says, you know, they wanna move forward, they're getting pressure to do development on this site. Then if I'm told otherwise, then I will use the non-irrigated because that most likely benefits. The applicant in order to move forward with the zone change. But initially, if you're asking me personally, I will always use the most restrictive. So I would most likely use the irrigated number. But again, I'm just a very small peg on the whole photo post stuff. As soon as I get overrated, it's just restrictive.
Well, I think there's gonna be a whole term. About non-irrigated ground with a sequel. And, you know. It'll be immediate and it's not be long term.
Yeah. And, and like I said, if, if the upper, if upper management, they, you know, they start. Just constantly telling me, hey, just use non-irrigated, just use non-irrigated. You know, and that's the analysis I made. But, you know, it's, it, it's one of those things. I won't say it is what it is, but again, I will use the, the irrigated one, but I'm overridden quite.
And how many staff members can prepare these analysis?
Any, any staff member on our, that we have in planning can prepare those. However, however, how many have actually prepared one of these? I, I would say myself, the, eh. Maybe with one other planner in the back, Sandy Roper, has prepared. But I believe everybody else, I don't think anyone.
Is, is it, did it sign off on assistant director or anything?
Uh, yes, it's reviewed. It's not signed off, but it is reviewed by the assistant director.
Is there an indication on it that has been reviewed? If you say it's not signed off, is there an indication it has been reviewed?
Whenever we bring something before the planning commission, um, and that was one of the things, it's a new policy change. We have what we call from, uh, what is it, project review before. So we all actually come into this room. Review the agenda item before it goes to the planning commission. So everything gets reviewed and the entire management team is here. So our chief environmental planner is here. Um, the Aaron, Aaron Bach is here, uh, usually Jason, uh, permanent manager, he's here. And occasionally Sandy Roper, uh, chief of the, uh, special projects. He will be in here as well and they all review whatever we submit. So it, it does go through a review, but. And then they do sign it at the end, the agenda. So they do sign it. But again, it's not specifically that they have reviewed this one thing. It's just that they approve of the entire packet. As we submitted to the planning commission.
Yeah. Any other roll?
I guess my, my question is, how do you ensure that between, even though there's not many planners that do it. You're giving consistent scores? And not interpreting these differently?
And I would love to be able to say that we all do it in a consistent manner. But again, a lot of these are very heavily politicized. And so even between my scores, this one, um, because it was one that nobody was really vested in. I was able to give it a proper score. But there have been other ones where, again, it's, it was very politicized. And I was told to keep it a low score. So even mine, you know, be like, why did you give that one a seven? Why did you give this one a nineteen? It's because I was told otherwise. I would love to be able to be consistent and in a perfect form, I'm pretty sure we would. But again, there's other factors that are involved in these calls.
Well, as we, as we look at, perhaps altering this, is it, if we give clear guideline. Does it have to be followed by policy standpoint?
And I think that if there were stronger policies, because I believe this RVOP analysis, if I remember the weights and measures for these. Was like a nineteen eighty-nine document that we use in order to score these. So if they have now been recently updated, we might be able to give a more clear reasoning. Instead of being, having to, you know, kind of bloody-daddy the numbers. But yeah, I believe, let me see if I can find it, but I believe it's nineteen eighty-nine.
It's an old document, so. Yeah, for those of you that have been in Sandy also.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's nineteen eighty. It's gonna take me a long time.
Because Sandy Roper, she, one of our chief planners, she recently worked on a project. There's a lot of research intel to that. Takes time. Especially looking up the information, looking up Williamson Acts, Ag Reserve, um. And looking up all this other data to put together the score sheet. So that's something. We'll live up in a few minutes. It does take time and research to make sure we get all the data, get the score.
So once this thing loads, so this is the tool that we use.
So yeah, it's an older document here that we use, uh, that kind of guides us as far as scoring.
It doesn't really play a big, but again, I, I believe it was nineteen eighty-nine. It doesn't replace it, but again, I I believe it was nineteen eighty-nine. It's one of these uh documents. But then these are, yeah, so these are all the use. And what we're supposed to be interpreting in order to control the score. And if you want, we can go ahead and print this one out for you and and pass it out. Okay, hold on, I'll go and get a copy.
I think I think we're going to really tackle those, we need to be looking at the implementation document.
Okay, right, yeah. Yeah, that's what we go by and utilize and kind of guides us all instead.
All the criteria, the way you measure. Politics fall in favor usually or against? Uh, just depends.
Depends, yeah.
These these uh discussion for getting recorded, it will be on the web. Okay, so uh we we received a letter from Slar County Farm Bureau, just chair, I think you you have a copy of it. There was a group that met, Farm Bureau, what if I had to put together? You guys, we we we're going to put together a ad hoc committee. And I could not come up with a process that could get through the uh county council flyoff on being able to do it within the Brown Act. Farms, at that point, Farm Bureau, uh volunteer under their purview of the of their plan. I'm sorry?
The land use committee.
Land use committee. Which I've also been a ad hoc committee member on that land use committee for quite some time too. But they they had a meeting, we had a meeting there and uh they came up with a letter with recommendations. At least I should say some talking points, one through eleven. Yet uh taking action today. But after our discussion we just had, I think what I'd like to do is, we can't take the action on this. We're going to continue with this on the agenda for our next meeting. But I think these are probably at a policy level, they need to discuss at a policy level higher than yours. And uh but I'd be welcome, if you think it'd be worthwhile, we can walk through these eleven. And you can give me your comments, give us committee your comments on how how you think with with, for example, number one, water availability, the scoring values associated with water, we believe they are underrepresented in RVOP. Particularly due to signal. Is that a is that a useful or valid statement? Do you agree with it? Or is it something that we need to be talking to Michael Worsom and or your your boss on something like this?
That's a very good question, I mean, it's something that um that we can discuss here um and evaluate. Especially for people who uh certain individuals who work on this more than I have.
Okay.
Or can weigh in more. But it's worth bringing up to and work with the map and on this as well when it comes to updating some of these.
Well, I'd like all the committee members to take a look at this and take it into consideration. If you have, if you have other input, contact me or contact Ian and uh coming in with our farm bureau land use, they're the ones that are bringing this up. And my intent at this point will be to keep this on the agenda and make sure that I've got someone at the right policy level to address these eleven points at our next meeting. Any other question, any other questions or comments on RVOP? Just just a note, general plan does call for the ag advisory committee to review the RVOP and and recommend updates. So we are within our purview and and our mission.
We appreciate it.
Okay, so to that. The other items, okay, so we got the Farm Bureau, the correspondent category breakdown, the modification of the, the needs kind of walked out on that, but um they could probably being as we don't have a forum, we probably does what we can. Any any other information from staff? Any other information from committee members? Other information, um these brought forward a assembly bill, Senate Bill twenty-five, twenty-eight. Since it allows land conservation contracts to be canceled. For. So. That's it. Did we have a, did we have copies of this? Assembly Bill twenty-five, twenty-eight that the needs had during our meeting?
I can make sure, I sent that out.
Didn't that go to the suspense? Sorry.
It's held under submission. It's held under submission?
Is it all under suspension now?
Submission.
Submission.
I think they got some feedback.
Okay. Give you an hour.
Yeah, it sounds like it's helping committees though.
Well, we'll just consider that something to keep an eye on. Any other items? Committee members, they request future agenda items. This time we'll we'll, we will be keeping the updated ag zoning and the update on our RVOP will definitely be on our next agenda. Other items?
When when we talk about ag litigation, land land mitigation?
Yeah, sure, that well, you that that comes under committee.
Oh, yeah.
Committee remarks, go ahead.
Well, we all know that land mitigation that kind of started with uh Walt Disney putting out fortunes, um coin fortunes out of business. And so uh development came to the idea that somebody did it. Anytime there's a acre ground taken out of ag, prime ag, uh by development, there had to be a corresponding mitigation of one acre. And that's been long going, but uh in the last eight to ten years with the water they've taken away from the west side. Could have been a whole lot of land taken out of farm. Recently, uh singers are going to take even more land out. So uh I say it recently uh cut down the land mitigation process. And they currently got sued by the Riverlands Trust and the other ones, so and they lost about two hundred thousand of the land mitigation.
Which one, who lost?
They lost.
Do I say who I say lost? So I say who lost?
So the land mitigation came back in. Well, VIA has put together a the Great Valley Land Trust. And we just recently put our first uh piece of ground into land mitigation. Process is to take the money that they're requiring developers to put in and give it to farmers instead of environmental listing conservation nets. So we've done the very first one, so the Great Valley Land Trust now is in the process of taking land mitigation and putting that money in heaven farms. But farmers are the only ones who are going to mitigate land, you know. If you're a farmer and you sell, you're going to go buy somebody else that you can be out, you're going to farm better land. Over time, over time, we've developed a whole lot more farm land that we really need now. There we are. So just so you know, the VIA came up with the process of it. That it's going to the Sway Riverlands Trust or the Sierra Club, it will be going to a farmer who's willing to put his land aside in a in a long-term uh what do you call that?
Conservation easement?
Yeah, easement, there you go. And then the land trust has to monitor to make sure it doesn't go into development.
Is it a conservation easement or is it a farm land easement?
It's farm land, that cannot be ever, cannot be developed. And that's all the land.
But you still.
You got to guarantee that a piece of ground won't be developed for every acre you put in. So of course the land, all that did was uh one of two things, maybe the housing expensive for, and that's why the VA is against it. But doesn't make the homeowner buying new have to process more money for the land. Or it's a negotiating tack to lower the value of the farmer trying to sell the land to the developer. So either way, both of those are sort of negative. So VIA is interested in keeping housing prices.
So we so we Google Great Valley Land Trust or the website?
I don't think you'll find it, yeah.
It's it's it takes Riverlands Trust out of the deal completely. It specifically takes them out for meaning they're out, that the city, they do not manage the land that goes into this truck. Whereas before, if you did a conservation easement, then they would be managing it, they would be managing. And under this, it's managed by the farmer, not Riverlands Trust. I don't know much we can discuss here, not being on the agenda, but it does certainly, it does the same thing. It does the same thing, it preserves the ag land as ag land. But but but, okay, so the city of LaSaya tells the developer, you're going to have to mitigate the farm land that you're using. The the city of that, so now the city of LaSaya has, they mandated to go to Great Valley Land Trust?
It's no, no.
Yeah, but Great Valley Land Trust can be an alternative now.
Right.
And that's why I wanted to make sure of that.
So we're we're offering alternative to the other guys, yeah.
Still, we're what they have, a nest though, in north, reced.
Well, we're we're in Tulare and Kings County, I think over time we might spread that out.
No, 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 you've had a great talk.
Your timing is impeccable. All right, appreciate that, Robert. Uh, do we need to have a copy on on the mitigation? The farm land mitigation?
I wouldn't mind seeing the details, but.
Missing what?
The details of it.
The detail of it.
Yeah, I think we actually, the VIA approached the Farm Bureau first, especially, she said, you don't want to get quite into that.
Well, I'm I'm glad, personally, I'm glad that you have been able to do that because we tried before and not be able to get get any distance with it. Elevate, let's add that to the agenda list. All right, anything else? Dodgers start playing at three forty. We play in the last place team, they only got beat once now.
You got beat last night, bad pass.
I know. Yeah, oh, by the way, if you can catch and you've ever wanted to try out for fishing, the Dodger's face. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Move second, because adjourn. The council provide me a great one. Almost in here, you want to.